Oh, sure, if you'd like.
Bowery, it's my dear God, we thank you for this life we have here on earth and your many blessings. We ask you to be with us this evening, particularly protect those who serve us in public safety, police and fire and EMS. And bless the citizens that we make here tonight that will bring glory to the community of Oxford and to your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, sorry, Matt.
I need to have a little...
Great work.
We're a little early.
We started a little early.
I love the hustle.
Add some...
Go on.
What great... Uh, I would, yeah, I would love to add a prayer.
Yeah, and a commercial, too.
Right? Always a commercial.
Okay. You can put this on camera.
That's all right. We need all the help we can get.
We all, we all need all the help we can get. Uh, God bless everyone here. Do we need a little bit more hope and grace in our world right now, I think? Uh, I think we do. Uh, I'm honored to always be invited to come here. Thank you for, uh, for praying quick. Uh, and I'll add a, just a quick prayer myself. Heavenly Father, I give you thanks for the ways that you've blessed us, the ways that you've kept us safe in your grace and in your mercy. Heavenly Father, I pray in these times especially that you would give us wise counsel so that we would be able to lead with your wisdom, that we would be able to act with your wisdom, this, this wisdom that you give us abundantly in Christ Jesus. We pray in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Matt.
Oh, and the advertisement is that we've got a new worship service, uh, Monday night at 7:00 PM. This Monday. We're testing it out.
Next week.
Yeah, this coming Monday, July...
Eighteenth.
Please go to the microphone. The advertisement is that we've got a new, uh, Monday night worship service that we're testing out, uh, this July 18th, Monday at 7:00 PM. Uh, it's, uh, it's gonna have some new music, um, non-traditional, so we've got our traditional Sunday morning and then we're gonna have a, a non-traditional Monday night. So you're all invited?
One thirty-six South Washington.
One thirty-six South Washington, right here in the Village of Oxford, across from the Sunoco.
Thank you.
God bless you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Matt.
Okay, let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance and have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Okay, Susan, do you wanna do a roll, please?
Councilmember Bama.
Here.
President Basardi.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Helmut.
Yep.
Councilmember Kennis.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
President, I'm sorry. Would we consider setting aside item nine A, the evening lease agreement? I did not receive it from the attorney today, but Patrick is here and I advised him of it, but I didn't know if he wanted to still talk about it or not, since we don't have the draft agreement from Bob at this time.
Okay.
It's up to you. And then you got to revise the agenda with the resolution opposing, uh, regional transportation authority and then appointing a dispatch transition committee.
So do we wanna set aside the lease agreement? Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I need, with the, um, set aside.
I'll make a motion to set aside nine A lease agreement with the evening group.
And to approve the rest of the...
And then approve the rest of the agenda.
Oh, and approve the rest of the agenda, sorry.
Support.
We have a motion by Kennis, supported by Helmut. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both saying aye. Uh, we don't have any presentations, no public hearings. Call to the public on non-agenda items. Yep.
I had to say something. I think it's all we, we all know that, uh, law enforcement's going through some difficult times right now. Uh, in fact, I'm looking back at my career of many years and kinda look at some more of a dangerous time of officers working the streets throughout our country right now. And I, I certainly wanna, just came up here, I wanna thank citizens of Oxford for their support. In the last week, I've had nothing but positive comments and thanking us for being out here and protecting them. In fact, uh, this week I had a family come in with our police health food, with a box of donuts, and on top of that, it says, "We love our police." Had some other young people come in with a nice poster, all signed by them, saying, "We celebrate Oxford officers." And I just wanna say, uh, to those citizens, the rest of them, that my officers really appreciate those gestures during these times. We really do, and myself, too. And, uh, one more thing, since we're on prayers, is the Dallas chief said during your prayers, I'd asked you just to pray for our officers across this country and to keep giving them strength and the courage of protecting our communities, and I thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Anybody else? Okay. Number seven, the consent agenda A, receive and file items.
There's no questions. I'll make a motion to receive and file consent agenda seven A. Second.
We have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bama. All in favor?
Aye.
Both saying aye. And we have seven B, approval items, and whoever makes the motion, make sure you put in the bill approval amount.
One, two, three, and four. If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items B, including the bills at the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
We have a motion by Helmut, supported by Dolan. Susan, do you wanna do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Helmut.
Yes.
Councilmember Kennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bama. Councilmember Dolan.
Yes.
President Basardi.
Yes.
Okay. Eight, unfinished business. Joe, do you wanna...
Yes, council, we have before you is an addendum to the agreement with Lake Orion Village for dispatch services, which increases their base fee amount to thirty thousand dollars as of July one, and they've already approved the agreement and it's presented to you this evening to approve it as well.
Does this...
I'm sorry. Tom?
First of all, nice job in getting, uh, this increase through, but that does not bind us any longer for additional services as, I think I'm wrong, right?
Yeah. They've given the notice of termination. Six months notice.
Increasing that through an addendum does not result in any contractual issues which we will be bound by?
They, they confirm, they just wanna know.
It's possible when they are gonna change, when they're gonna change so they can make
whatever plan they're gonna do yet, but they're fine with that.
Do we have an opinion from Bob on whether there are legal, any legal contractual ramifications for that increase?
He drafted the agreement.
Good news. If there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the first addendum to the agreement for dispatch services with the village of Lake Orion to authorize the village manager, the village president and village clerk to sign on behalf of the village, subject to review by the village attorney.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Bama. Uh, Susan, let's do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kennis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bama.
Yes.
Councilmember Dolan.
Yes.
President Basardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Helmut.
Yes.
Okay. Eight B, electronic message, signed recommendation from the planning commission. Joe, do you wanna...
Counsel, we have before you, the planning commission did re-review the electronic message on board sign, um, matter, and they, at this time, recommend no change to what the council's already adopted in the ordinance. And I won't say anything further. They did discuss it and consensus was no change. Prohibition, it was prohibit son right this time.
Okay.
Sue. If there's no questions, I'd like to, uh, move and receive and file the recommendation of the planning commission.
Support.
We have a motion by Bama, supported by Helmut. All in favor?
Aye.
Both saying aye. Okay, now, new business. Uh, we set aside the lease agreement. Uh, the resolution opposing the RTA.
Yes, council, we have before you is a resolution opposing the regional transitory, transportation authority millage. This is formatted after the, uh, resolution that was passed by Oxford Township, and what it's advocating is that indicates that, uh, that's something that they felt that should be a vote of the people for one thing, and, which is coming up, and opposing that because of its minimal impact in Oakland County, in particular, our area, on the number of reasons cited in here. We have our other services, of course, we have NODA for our local services, and so it's presented for your consideration this evening, should you care to take a position in opposing it.
Joe, I have a question. Um, if this passes, because we're village and township residents, does that mean that we'd be taxed township and the village? It's just township? Yeah, Mal?
I'd just like to say that I for one am not opposed to this. I think even though it doesn't come to Oxford, I think there's a benefit to all the residents in Michigan as far as road repairs and health, less emissions in the air. I mean, I think this is gonna be beneficial, even if it's not coming directly to my door.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm, I take a different stance on it. I am opposed to it. Um, I think that we, our NODA service here that we're paying for is something that we should wholeheartedly support, and, um, I don't see this changing anything as far as roads or less traffic or...
I don't think this even competes with NODA. They're two totally different, I mean, you could compare apples to oranges.
Right.
For people who have to get to work...
But I'm supporting the NODA, and I think that's who we should...
But I, I just wanna say, I don't think they're the same thing at all. NODA doesn't take you to Ann Arbor. Those doesn't take you to Detroit. It's, Michigan is so far behind the scenes as far as public transportation and mass transportation because, you know, the big three want you to buy cars. Well, not everybody can afford a car, and I think this is, will be huge as far as integrating people into different businesses.
Okay, anybody else? Or what's council's pleasure?
As an individual and a residential taxpayer, I would articulate the sentiments that I am adamantly opposed to the regional transportation authority millage. I think it is, uh, regionally specific for the more urban areas of our nation, specifically of our state. I don't think it will have significant impact on our locale, and it is my belief that it is essentially a tax designed to generate revenue from the locations which have the ability to pay such revenue in order to benefit the areas which do not have the ability to pay such revenue. I'm adamantly opposed to it. I personally, for one, support the resolution.
Tom?
I mean, I love the idea of it, but we have so many other issues in this village to pay for regional transportation and add additional tax burden on our residents that I can't support it. I love the idea of it. It works. Um, you know, I've seen it in cities all over the world, but now, now is not the time to put any additional burden on our tax base when we can't pay for our own water and we're gonna have roads coming up in two or three years.
Okay, what's council's pleasure?
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution as authored in opposition to the regional transportation authority millage.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion by, um, Dolan, supported by Kennis. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and the last thing, appointment of the dispatch transition team?
Yes.
Committee?
Yes, council, Bob Davis suggested that council consider having a transition, dispatch transition committee to monitor things are developing and progressing and then report back to the council at the regular meet, the meetings as we go along here, and, um, Eric Dolan and Rose Bama had offered to be on the committee, and Tom, Attorney Bob Davis and myself presented for your consideration this evening.
Um, I have a question. I think this is a good idea, but, um, if the rest of us have either questions or suggestions or input, we're invited to do, put that forth. It's not just gonna be this committee's.
Uh, this is just to monitor and see how things progress.
Okay.
Report back.
I would make a request that we correct the spelling error.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry.
No problem.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, it's, um, Eric Dolan, Rose Bama, Bob Davis and Joe Young. And I think Neil's on it, too, isn't he? His name is not here, but is he on it?
That wasn't recommended, 'cause Bob threw out these names, so, I mean, you can if you want, it's up to you. I mean, obviously you can be intimately involved.
Well, there's probably a reason that...
He'll be there advising as we all...
Right. Okay. So what's council's pleasure?
I'll move to establish a dispatch transitional committee of councilperson Eric Dolan, councilperson Rose Bama, attorney Bob Davis and village manager Joe Young with updates provided as, provided as a council agenda item. Support.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Kennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both saying aye. We didn't have any items removed. Public comment? Manfred's report?
Only thing I just had to report is that, uh, we are doing some improvements in downtown. Um, Don Brantley and Joe Frost walked through town and saw some of the needs we have. There are repairing benches as, as we speak, and they'll be doing some concrete and other repairs, uh, for the downtown area, and, uh, I'll be addressing that, uh, soon here. It's safer downtown, especially for upcoming Lone Ranger event on August sixth.
Lewis' report?
Well, I am, I guess sad to report, all the taxes went out, so everybody should have their taxes by now. Water bills went out today. Um, it's still time, there's still plenty of time to sign up for the sewer credit for June, July and August.
It did make a difference for those that signed up.
I probably only have about two hundred, so I'm still looking for another thousand people to come in and sign up for the sewer credit. And remember, the offices are closed now on Fridays.
Bill, did you have?
What she did. Can we do a...
A do-over? Yes.
Not you.
Well done, Oxford Township supervisor. A lot of people have been asking me about the orange barrels going up and down, M twenty-four from actually the village limits to the county line. I did get in touch with the road commission today, and they are going to be starting Monday. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, 'cause I believe you talked to them.
Getting into that, probably better. The road commission, they don't have any, it's not the road commission at all.
Well, it's fine, but anyhow, I got word from one of the people that's supposed to know that they're going to be milling and resurfacing the highway from Harriet north to the, uh, county line, starting Monday. Whether it's true or not, but I have to believe it is. That person from the road commission?
On record and said call Lady at M dot, and she wouldn't answer her phone, so.
I guess we'll find out Monday, then.
I just, a lot of people have been asking about the road.
Excuse me, Mr. Dubbitt? To what row?
From Harriet. Up to Davis, I think.
Okay, um, council comments? Tom?
I have none tonight. Surprise, surprise.
Oh, I have a big comment. I'm very disappointed that we requested the fire chief to be at the meeting tonight, and he didn't show. Um, I'm very disappointed in the fact that it took our fire department more than ten minutes to get six blocks away to an occupied house structure. I'm very disappointed that this doesn't seem to bother the chief believes who stated that that was acceptable. I don't believe it's acceptable. I don't want it to take ten minutes for them to get to my house. I'm disappointed that the dispatch center dispatched tone Lake Orion first, and they corrected themselves and toned Oxford, adding seconds to the run, and they did it again yesterday for a possible heart attack in front of Wrighty. I think we need to find a way that they're gonna tone the Wright department. This is twice in two weeks, and I don't think that's acceptable. But I guess everybody else does. I guess, would it take some ten minutes to get to your house?
Carol, you didn't read the Oxford letter?
I did read the Oxford letter. Okay, from the time you dial nine-one-one, which is when my clock starts, to the time the fire department gets there, it's more than ten minutes.
One twenty-four, one thirty-two.
Okay, it was more than ten minutes from the time you dial nine-one-one...
Aye.
Till the time, and that's when the fire chief showed up, not when any of the equipment showed up. Yeah, I'm not gonna argue with you, CJ, because if you wanna discuss the fact that it took them more than three minutes to tone the department, that's even worse.
You're embarrassing.
Really, Bill? You're embarrassing.
You're embarrassing.
Oh, you're embarrassing.
There are many times that it's never been brought to the public.
Oh, yeah, but the township's perfect.
I didn't say we're perfect, but you know, we're...
We sit here and we always tell the departments when they did a great job.
Okay, okay.
I don't wanna get into arguments, Mr. Dubbitt. When we get dispatch, you're in my office every time with little things happening. I'm gonna tell Carol. Yeah, but the fact, the truth has aren't obvious, sir. How many times it took when you called, it came in, it was over three minutes from the time, nine-one-one call. I don't wanna call here. That's why the chief is not coming here, 'cause you made a big issue. No, I have other... They made a big issue, right? I take care of it in the public, private. I'll say what I have to say, and I have utter respect for Chief Schultz, but I think we need to look at things through, we need to look at things. Why it takes three minutes for dispatch to structure? They was locked up. I just say, I wanted to make a point, let's, let's correct it, that's all. And I know... If you wanna have public stuff, I will, I will look after it, I can really... Well, I...
Okay, all right, enough. Enough for both of you? Enough?
Yeah, I'll go with you.
Enough?
No comments.
Eric?
Several. As the only individual in this room that wears a firefighting outfit and the only individual here who is ever dressed from a standard, uh, uniform into turnout gear, started a fire truck, taken a brief look at a map, driven to a location and engaged a fire truck, I can tell you that eight minutes in the middle of the evening is frankly a rather expedient response, whether it's six blocks or whether it's two miles. I think we need to keep perspective of the situation and separate the emotions of the topic which is really what's being discussed here in undertones and focus on the exact issues. Our organization's going through transition, and I think it needs to be acknowledged and accepted. I think the goal for this village should be to increase all response times, decrease the response times, and work as efficiently as possible with Oakland County to reduce any concerns that we have. In any transition, there are potential issues. These alleged issues have been addressed by the fire department, they've been addressed by Oakland County, they have been discussed with, with village council members, they've been analyzed and reviewed, and they have been evaluated for what they are. It's time to move forward instead of looking back. I would ask that everyone that is involved in this village try and actively participate in a proactive response instead of a destructive manner, instead of a critical manner. I would say that in this time, which police are under attack and firefighters and medics, frankly, have been attacked as well, we try and focus on what's really important. The transition has happened, it's done, it's in effect, it is going forward, let's work on how to make it better. We also have a village that is experiencing significant financial issues. We have sidewalks that need to be restored, we have benches that need to be restored, we have a village count, complex that is in a state of disrepair. These things take a significant amount of money. From what I understand, it is an amount of money that we don't currently have to put into the building. Since these decisions take a period of time to implement, I don't think there is any time better than the present for strong, engaged and active leadership to take a stance and start making decisions that are going to resolve our problems instead of debate our problems. I, for one, personally, would like to be a part of the resolution. I don't have any interest in being a part of the old guard in the conflict and the disputes. I would ask that all members of leadership in the decision-making process join the same team for the betterment, betterment of the taxpayers and the village. Frankly, what I see is juvenile.
Yeah, Mr. Dubbitt? Just quickly, I concur with you, guy. Just the facts, that's all I want. Didn't argue with it for long, it's just... I don't want it that way. As you said, just the fact, I just want to... That's all, Mr. Dubbitt. That's all. You know, I was used to dispatch here before, to be honest with you. I accept what's done, it's done, we're gonna switch, and I'm not gonna argue today anymore. It's a hard thing, we used to have dispatch and it runs out, and maybe that's acceptable, and that's just the way it is. A larger dispatch center, maybe it does take two or three minutes, but we were used to that before. And I think logically, I can sit down, 'cause I've worked there, that I think there's things there that we can expedite faster, and I'll be part of that. Without getting any arguments, I don't want to, just what's best for us, that's all I'm working on.
Chief, I respect your comments. I completely agree, and I hope that we can all do that.
Thank you.
I think, uh, some of this bickering is counterproductive. We have taken a step, we're moving forward. I think we need to do anything that we can to improve it and make it as best as possible for the safety of our police officers and for the safety of the firefighters in the township. It's in everyone's best interest, including the residents, and especially the residents.
I agree.
Bill?
I agree with the chief, and I apologize for my attitude. Historically, when things are screwed up, whether it's the shared department or the dispatch, you can ask the chief. I've taken it into his office, tried to resolve it, come to some sort of a way where we can't let it happen again. And it, it didn't matter whose side screwed up, but again, it's done in private. You don't air it out in public. That's the only thing that bothers me. The chief works for the township. If you want a question, you come, come through me and the chief, and what I did was I, I called the review to see if he could do a story about the review of Oxford Leaver. And I would hope that, that it was a wonderful article explaining exactly what happened. Again, we want this thing run as efficiently as we possibly can, and I can guarantee you and I can guarantee you, anytime there's a screw up, I'm on the phone and I'm getting parties together to see how we can run it.
Thanks, Bill.
I think everyone involved in this situation is an accomplished leader. The chief is a leader, Mr. Dunn is a leader, Mr. Schultz is a leader. Every one of those individuals, along with the individuals from the county, is an accomplished person in leadership. They are all highly accredited. And I think it's high time that these two locales bury the hatchet. I understand that there's history. Everyone understands there's history. But the point in time comes in which that has to be laid aside. And I would like to think that we're at that point. This village is in a critical juncture, I think. And if we don't make some sound, effective decisions, we're going to have a village that is behind the eight ball in terms of soliciting business. And we're going to have a village that does not have the very best public safety agencies that we possibly can. And I think we have great public safety agencies. It's time to begin working amongst the township, the village and the county. And I for one won't accept anything less.
Okay, I just want to echo some of the comments that have been made about keeping our officers safe and appreciating them. I think we've got a great crew here in Oxford, the village police. And I just want to say that you guys be safe, Eric be safe.
Thank you.
And that's it. We're not having a closed session, so I will entertain a motion for...
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Were you raising your hand for something, Dan? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven o'clock.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Helmut, supported by Dolan. All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign.